Welcome to the special joint city council and planning commission meeting of July 10th, 2025. Shall we stand and salute the flag? Hello, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Hudson, absent. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
And the Planning Commission Chair Brott.
Here.
Vice Chair Coram. Looks like he is appearing via teleconference. One moment, please. Keith is participating via Zoom pursuant to AB 2449 for just cause reason. Keith, do you have anyone 18 years or older in the room with you?
No, I'm alone.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Valencia. Commissioner Ocampo. Commissioner Nygaard.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Get started. Like welcome everybody and I appreciate your time. This is extremely important for our city, the zoning code. It's setting in place how we grow, how we become business friendly and responsive to our citizens and promote positive growth. The zoning code is extensive and could use, we could be here all night talking about all the various pieces of it. So I'd like us to focus on direction for the folks here from Harrison Associates. I suspect all of you, like I do, have comments on various of issues, so I've asked staff to prepare a comments card. So if you have comments that are just in nature of, I think this could be changed, or this is a misspelling, or I don't like how this sits. We could write those down and they could peruse those while they go through their edits. If it's a big picture item, we certainly need to talk about those sort of things. So these are available for all of the commissioners and the council members and staff that they, the general public, if they'd like to come in and make some notes or comments after the meeting during the day. So with that, we'll go to public comment individuals wishing to address the city council concerning the municipal code Title 18 workshop. They're invited to make oral comments up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to mayor and the council members and planning commissioners. And by state law, the council is not permitted to take any action discussion item on any item not appearing on this agenda, so it should be focused on Title 18 tonight. If you have any documentation that ultimately you'd like to deliver, please bring it to the city or get it to the city clerk. With that, we'll move to item, well, is there anybody in the audience that wished to make a public comment? Hearing none. We'll go to item five municipal code Title 18 workshop. Recommended action, city council and planning commission participate in a public workshop to update Title 18 for the city of Willis. That we will turn it to Marty Brown.
And Marty Brown's going to turn it right over to Jim Bennett, Department of Community Development Service Director, to make some opening remarks.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for participating in this. It's like, like I was mentioning, it's a very important piece. It's a very large chapter, so getting through it could take, could take a lot of time and the more due diligence on getting through this, the better we can come with a good end result. So again, appreciate it. At the Planning Commission, we've been kind of gearing up and researching these topics a couple pieces at a time throughout the last couple of Planning Commission meetings. Felt like it was a really good exercise and good for me, good for staff, and good for everybody to get an understanding of that. With that, I'll go ahead and do some introductions as we do have some new Planning Commission members. First, I'll start with Harrison Associates. We've got Delaney Garlic, who's our senior planner. Amy Rossick, who's a planner four with Harrison Associates. And David Mack, who is the senior project manager for Harrison Associates. Our city council consists of Vice Mayor Thomas, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Pride, and Councilmember Busby. Our Planning Commission is the newly.
You stated, are we on the right track? So I'm just going to hand it over to the council and Planning Commission.
Anybody like to jump in first? Pass. You want to go?
I'll keep it, I'll keep it under 30 minutes on. Okay. Thanks for the presentation. Great outline. Covered a lot, said a lot in a few pages, so thank you very much. And boy, we're sure glad you're working on this. This is long overdue, this Title 18 update, as you know, you put it out, all those issues. My God. You know, we haven't been in a financial position to upgrade it. And I came on the council in 2000, in 2000. And this Title 18 has been atrocious from the beginning, just because it's outdated, obviously extremely outdated. And, and it's, you know, the, and appreciate you alluding to the fact that we have a few different comprehensive values, a turn comprehensive general plan. Great general plan. That was also, that was about 40 years, right Marty? I think it'd been about 40 years.
It was 30, but yeah.
And the principal author of that, and you probably know, Karen Veldman, she was our contract planner here for 15 years about, I think.
17.
17 years, 17. Karen, great person, excellent, excellent planner, astute profession, very conscientious. However, she was tied, as you know, to our municipal code in order to interpret that. It's extremely difficult. It caused her, the Planning Commission and the council a lot of angst over the, because it's, okay. It's just, it's an obsolete, excuse my French, crappy code. And just because it hasn't been updated. So finally, finally we're here and you as well as Sean are working on it. So from my standpoint, you're up to fabulous, a lot of holes, a lot of leaks, and it just needs to be updated all the way around. Style format, I mean, yeah, it is convoluted looking at it. I've tried to read this thing a number of times. I was telling Marty, boy, it's like a nightmare. But again, as I say, it has caused our planning a lot of trouble in the past. Those of you that have been on that commission for a while, realize that. The crazy hang up on colors. I don't understand. We've had corporate colors, the crazy hang up on corporate. And that's, that's brought up issues before. It doesn't make any sense. The crazy hang up we have on sandwich boards and banners and that sort of, you know, those are, and I won't expand, but I'll make some comments here as Vice Mayor Thomas asked us. Which weren't allowed. And we, the council just finally threw up our arms. You want sandwich boards? As long as you don't block the sidewalks, not a public safety issue. Put all the sandwich boards you want to. You know, and a lot, a number of businesses utilize sandwich boards. I don't remember now today what we did to tweak the code to make that work, if anything. Maybe we did, I just don't remember. But, but you know, that was, it's kind of a silly thing, you know? What's wrong with a sandwich board? As long as it's not a public safety issue, fine. So in, you know, but things like that. Between the colors and the banners and the sandwich boards, I'd like to see, I'll make a note of this, I think we really need to address the banners during, during business hours. That's been a problem with some members of the community. I don't see a problem with, with appropriate banners on display during business hours. I don't see a problem with that, don't see a problem with sandwich. But these little things cause a lot of angst with our citizens, and they really do. And it just needs to be clear, clear, complete and concise. Yeah. Updated to current law, as you know, best practices. So I'm not a planner, never wanted to be a planner. I'm glad you're the planner. So I'll defer to your, to your best practice recommendations on how to address, you know, the entire municipal code. But thank God we're here and finally, finally, we're in a financial position, sort of, to be able to update this municipal code. Just, it needs to be user friendly, follow the law, user friendly, constituent friendly, business friendly, planning commission friendly, council friendly, staff friendly. And in my mind, and just, right now, there's, there's just, there's a lot of nonsense in our municipal code. Some of those, and there's, there's a lot of hangups and I'm not, and it just shouldn't be that. Like I say, it's caused a lot of issues over the years. But because, because, back to Karen, who was a primary opera, author of our, of our great general plan, and as you alluded, doesn't, doesn't match up to our, to our code, our Title 18 code, right? That's a problem. So Karen was for, you know, calling her sword here and is no longer here in the city of Willis, because she, it was her task to interpret this crazy, old, outdated, hideous municipal code. So anyway, those are pretty much, you know, my comments. And Rick, I didn't, you prefer that any specifics we write down? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Excellent. Absolutely. This is a pet peeve of mine ever since I came on the council. I don't understand why our current code has the acronyms backwards. All right, and you probably noticed that. What in the, what is the deal with that? Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. General Commercial District, Highway Commercial, it's CG and CH rather than common sense should be GH and HC, so it makes sense what you're looking at. I mean, right there. Page, our very front page on this, on this, this outdated format is, it doesn't make any sense. Could you please fix that?
Yeah.
Did you notice that? So, yeah. And anyway, so, I mean, some of them are, are backwards and some of them aren't. But it's always been a pet peeve of mine, I've never understood it. But that's really all I had, so thank you for putting up with me. Thank you, thank you.
If I could, just a quick reminder to please speak into the mic. You were a little bit far away, Vice Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
No, the Vice Mayor was earlier, so, sorry. But I see you've already brought it in to speak, so go for it.
I do have a quick ask, because I'm new and Marty or Joe might be able to answer this, just to have a little clarification. So the general plan was updated? And are we just trying to align with what's been put into the general plan as far as the code to match the general plan? Are we trying to eliminate some things? How is the rezoning being established? Has that already been predetermined? I just want to have a better understanding of what it is we should be, instead of digging into all of it. I just want to have a better understanding of what it is we should be, instead of digging into all of it and, and going back over everything. I skimmed over the general plan, but I need to take a better look. But if you could just kind of clarify what brought us to this point and what we should really focus on.
Certainly, I'd be happy to make a stab at that and then Joe might want to. Um, so, um, the general plan was updated and was just wrapping up when I arrived here in twenty twenty-one. And it was approved at council in the spring of twenty-two, I believe, spring or summer. And the general plan is the document that's the vision, right, for the city. It's real big picture, it's policy document. But the code is really the document that allows you to implement those policies and, you know, kind of the boots on the ground types of code that you want to implement. So the, as, as Councilmember Hanson stated, when the general plan was updated in twenty-one, it was approximately thirty years old. And typically you want to update your general plan every ten to fifteen years. Ten years might be a minor update, fifteen years to twenty years would be a comprehensive. So thirty years is a pretty old general plan and an old vision. Once you do that, then typically a city wants to update the code to be consistent with the vision. Well, as Councilmember Hanson was highlighting, you know, the city lost its seventeen year planner right after the general plan was updated. And so we never went to the next step, which was to make sure the code is consistent with the plan. So there's that part. And then the other part, you, you were actually right on both points. The other part is that there just are some things, regardless of the general plan, that are outdated, they're not best practices. And so it's kind of a two for what we're doing is trying to make it consistent, but we're also trying to implement some better practices that are out there in the universe.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lori?
Well, we'll switch to the planning.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to say that the restructuring, the renovation, that's great. Many have mentioned already that it's kind of tedious to work out online, you know, being able to break that down. I'm excited to see that.
Again, if you could speak into the mic, please, thank you.
Lori?
So when I look at the planning, particularly when we look at our zoning and we talk about design guidelines, I think it's important. And Councilmember Hanson alluded to that. We have a lot of differences of opinions in terms of what things look like. That's where color comes in, that's where the types of signage comes in. And so when I look at the zoning and the overlay and the, where we park cars, how we use our yards, all these things boils down a lot of times to aesthetics, you know, what do we want our town to actually look like? And so to me, it's, it's difficult to look at it piecemeal without sort of looking at it holistically also. So, and I think that's where we start getting the stakeholder input. You know, what do we want Willows to look like? What do we want it to look like when people come off the freeway? What do we want to look that entryway to look like as it draws into downtown? What do we want our downtown to look like? Do we want it? And I don't know the answers to this. Everyone has their own opinion, but do we want it to be a somewhat cohesive look with a color scheme, with, you know, certain commonalities? Or is it really, you know, let's be unique and diverse and it's kind of what people want? So I think that's a key. And I think that's kind of, as, as we talk about the things we see from a planning commissioner perspective or a city council perspective, I think we know a lot more. And so we look at it a little bit differently. But I think as we go down this path, getting some input from the community in terms of the aesthetics of a town. There's a businesswoman in town and she does a lot of posting about sustainability and viability and what your community looks like. So I think we want to be cognizant of that. The other thing I think about as I look through the code is we have a lot of very specific code issues. We have a lot of violations when you look at the code. You know, for example, you drive down a street and people have five cars parked in their front yard and a lot of cars on the street. And the code says you, you can't do that, but we don't have capacity for enforcement. So as I look at the code from a council member perspective, it's sort of like, do we codify everything that we want and enforce what we can? Or do we codify what we can enforce and then add more stuff later? So do we go for what's the most important, keep it simple? And then over time, when problems kind of arise, change it up? Or do we need a lot of detail in our code so that we can enforce a problem when a neighbor has an issue? I could go through here very specifically and I've got a lot of notes. I sell real estate, so I run into a lot of stuff from people all the time. One of my little pet peeves kind of from real estate is garages. We require garages. We see a lot of illegal conversions of garages because people want the living space. And they can't, you know, they could try to get a variance, but if it's required by code, what's the reason for a variance? So I have questions like, do we require a garage? Or do we just, you know, have off-street parking and leave that up to the person building the house or buying the house if they want the garage? So some of those things that I, you can drive in town and it looks like a garage, but if you go on the other side, it's a wall and it's now a bedroom. So those are the, some of the kinds of that.
And I think you bring up a really good point is that the stakeholders, it also has to do with the vision of what we want this town to look like. This is a small town. Willows has, I'm just going to say politely fallen back. We have lost a lot of businesses. We have attempted to grow. We've had some financial difficulties. So I think we have to take into consideration what some of those codes look like as we grow. Do, you know, what is our growth? What is our strategic plan for the growth of this town? Do we want to keep it small but vital? Do we want to make sure that it is inviting? You brought up a really good point about the garages. My husband is livid because we don't have a garage, but we bought that house the way that it is and they had converted it. And we thought about putting it back, but we needed the bedrooms. So that's another thought. Are they going to be grandfathered in? Are people going to be all of a sudden, you know, in violation because they bought a house thirty years ago and it didn't have a garage? But now the, the code says that we have to have a garage. So I think we need to keep that in mind. I don't, and I, and also the transparency. I like the idea of really having stakeholder, the community involved. I think there needs to be a lot of communication with them, every attempt to bring them to meetings so that they can voice their opinion. We have to make sure they have a say. And as Councilman Hanson brought up, I had a business person come to me yesterday, as a matter of fact, about the signs, not being able to put an open sign up. And, you know, it was in violation. And I think it was one of the flag type that you can stick out on the sidewalk or whatever. So it's just a simple thing and it's because the trees that are on the sidewalk block her, her windows. So you can't see the open sign in her window. So, you know, there's just a lot of, it seems like a minor thing, but I think we need to hear those people. We need to make sure that we take that into consideration.
Was it fifteen, fifteen pages, Marty, I think, for our current sign, our current sign regulation, eighteen? Oh, my God.
And I, I guess that, that's one of my question, are we wanting to, are we trying to make it more? Or are we trying to streamline it? Because I, I love the presentation and I agree that, you know, streamlining, being able to navigate through here. People struggle with that if they're not used to it. And I think that's a, that's a, a great place to start. But also what our vision is for code. Do we want to make sure that we're allowing room for growth? And what we have now and what's archaic, what we need to purge, what we need to streamline, I guess.
Ask a question. All right, if I ask.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask a question of Harris and Associates. Going back to something that Councilmember Pride said about, you know, do we make things in the code that have to be enforced? Should we be a lot looser with that? And like just, you know, maybe not so many because we don't have the capacity and staffing to enforce it? Or is it better to kind of put in what you want as your vision? And if you can't enforce it, you can't for now, but maybe, you know, hopefully someday you will. I was just curious in your experience, probably this is David and Delaney. What is more of a common best practice in municipalities to go one way or the other? If there's, if there is something that you've seen and experienced, maybe you could share that with the council. I mean, I have certainly my own instincts, but I'm not going to say what those are. I'm going to let you say what they are.
Thanks, Marty. So generally, yeah, that, that's something that we would need direction on professionally, not as advice, but just experience. I would say codify everything you would like to enforce, whether you can enforce it or not. Because the con of not doing that is you get people that create uses and then say, it's not illegal. And then you, you fight that. The pro to only codifying what you can enforce is then your code enforcement staff doesn't feel overburdened and you don't end up in these fights at city council about interpretation. So that's really kind of what you guys are talking about is what do you want the city to look like? Because if it's codified and you don't have the resources to enforce it, you may have the resources later. If it's not codified and you decide you'd like to enforce it, that's a code text amendment. And that's a whole different process.
The other thing I would mention is, isn't it typical too that if it's not codified and somebody does it? And then you go, okay, yeah, we got to take care of this and you go do the code text amendment. Typically, whatever already happened is usually already grandfathered in and non-conforming use.
Yeah, you couldn't retroactively make something illegal just because you didn't like it.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
Several people have talked about the garage conversions being illegal. I was on the council in the eighties when we were having a lot of floods. And the first thing that flooded were the garages because usually they are on the same level as the land. When you consider all that, all of Willows basically is in a flood plain. I think it's very prudent to keep garage conversions from happening. In addition, if the garage is converted, the junk of that home then gets put on the side yard in the front or in front of the garage. And we have several places, I'm sure that looked that way. I know there have been garages illegally converted. And from my understanding, a bank will not loan unless they have a permit on that conversion. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take my turn at it too. My biggest issue was with the sign ordinance. And I went out to our highway entryway or commercial highway, highway, commercial, whatever, backwards. And we have sixteen tall pole signs that are active. There's five more that are vacant. There's no sign on top or there's a sign, but there's nothing in it. There's five short ones and there's three short ones that are vacant. So all told, there's twenty-nine in that short area around Wood and, and Humble. What concerns me is when you're driving down the freeway and we've all seen towns that all you see is a sea of pole signs. I don't know if there's a current way to do it and I don't want to stifle anybody from placing a sign that's going to generate revenue and business for their enterprise. But is there a way we could encourage, and I don't know the correct term for it, I call it a pylon sign. And the only one that we would have, and I'll define it, is the one at Starbucks that advertises Starbucks Hotel and Subway Sandwich. Multiple, is there a way we could encourage that? And try to limit the number of popsicle sticks that sit up as we go down the highway? Because I think that creates, I don't like the looks of it when I'm driving downtown and I'm, or driving down the freeway and I want to pull into a town. I think that detracts from the beauty of our, of our city.
We call that a litter, litter on a stick in planning.
It's, it's pretty much like that. And I, I took pictures of them to make sure I can count them all straight. And so far it doesn't look that egregious. But if you add another hotel that has a sign and he adds a restaurant has a sign and he adds another off-site sign, pretty soon it gets to the point where it's, it's too much. And how do you limit too much without withholding or detracting from the opportunities afforded by being on the I five corridor? The other item I had is currently we have two billboards. One of them is dilapidated and we're going to try to get that fixed up if we can. And there's one down further on the south end of town at fifty-seven. The code section one twenty-five dot oh three oh prohibits billboard signs. We have a lot of I five frontage. I don't know if that's, maybe should be a use permit or something. I, I defer to the experts. And like you, Gary, I had flags, banners and pennants and A-frame signs, which are allowed, but not allowed are flags, banners and pennants. And the, the new thing is the stick in the sidewalk and the big flag. So I think we need to have some rules about that as well as banners. And I know certain businesses like to add their sign and then they'll come back and they'll put a banner up. And then they'll put another banner up or they'll keep put plaster and things in the window to the point where clearly they're exceeding their sign limitations. So I'd like to see, those are the issues that I think with, with signs that I would address.
So you're concerned about how many signs of business puts in their window?
Well, I wasn't going to use a specific business.
Well, I mean, somebody has a.
But if you have a business that has all windows in the front and it's, say it's a forty foot wide business and they're allowed so many square feet per forty feet and they've maxed that with their sign up front advertising their business. And now they have a sign, a four by, or a two by two sign that says, we have this product for X dollars. And we have another one that says, this product for X dollars. It gets to the point where all you see is the sign. And it exceeds the sign ordinance.
And I, I believe there's a.
Just have an issue with that, but.
Well, I think there's a legal requirement if you sell alcohol or tobacco products, you not have X amount of the window covered so that you can see into that business. So if you think of liquor stores and having tobacco, this, fresh beer here, cold beer there, I'll get specific with it, I guess. Because that's usually where you see that kind of, it's not their logo, it's not anything, it's additional advertisements. And that's made so people can see in the business, I believe. So there's not any nefarious activities of underage alcohol sales or anything like that. So that's, that's a point to be made on that, I guess.
You may find that.
I believe it's a percentage of the total window area.
So that, what I, I also agree. I think everything should be in code with the idea that we want to enforce and that should be one of our goals. If we have rules, we should be, a goal should be that we enforce it. You know, and I think it's easier to have the rules and work towards that. And then the other thing is because it took us so long to update our general plan, do we love our general plan? Is there anything in that we want to change just because we are working on the code? I'm just asking. And, you know, do we love it? Joe, do you love it?
I, I just want to, I'll add just a, just a little piece to that. But I think that goes back to the, the entryway district not being even mentioned in the general plan or yes, the general plan. And do we want to incorporate maybe not exactly the way the entryway district is, but an overlay district that kind of lends itself to something general that more than general commercial, which is what the, it is currently zoned. We've also, I think, got an issue in South Willows where a piece of land is zone planned development, where I think it should have been highway commercial as it's right off of fifty-seven. So there are some small things. And even the, the central commercial piece of the general plan, it is actually, it's discussed in the general plan, but you don't see that overlay on the map like you would. So there's a chance to even redefine those definitions of where central commercial is. I don't necessarily know if it needs to be included in the general plan because it is actually mentioned. But on the zoning map piece of it, you know, how do we like the boundaries? Do we want to expand? Do we want to shorten? Do we want to add different things in those overlays? So with the general plan piece of it in the map itself, I think there's an opportunity to kind of look at some of those zones of what we currently have. And, you know, do we want to, do we want to make our zoning map have some overlays to that land use map in the general plan?
We really, really like it, but there's room for improvement.
We really, really like it, but there's room for improvement. I just threw that out there.
We can customize it, you know? So it's, I think there's a couple errors and then there's, there's things that with like the entryway and central commercial being the two big things where we don't see an overlay in our land use map, which is totally fine, but it's something that we can, that can be done and changed if wanted for our zoning, zoning map. And those are just map related. It's not like it's spelled out in the actual zoning code too much besides parking exemptions and things like that, which again can be reconsidered within those specific central commercial.
Thank you. The other thing, since I'm holding the mic still, I do agree with you Rick. I think that too many signs in a window, it's ugly. I mean, it detracts from the business, you know? And also, I also see as a safety issue even more so than just the underage drinkers, just what's going on in there? Somebody getting held up or whatever, it just, it doesn't look good. Same with bars on windows, I have a problem with that also. And then the flags, I think one of the issues with all the different signs, this is just my opinion, is that people put the flag banners up, but they never change them. And I think that's one of the reasons that people don't like them is that people don't keep them looking nice and fresh, you know? And sometimes, and they don't take them down and then you go to the business and they're really close. So I think that's one of the reasons that people have concerns with those kinds of
Yeah, thank you. No, council member pride, thank you Lord, mentioned enforcement teeth. That's one of the items I had highlighted. Our enforcement is atrocious in our code and we, it has no teeth. If you probably noticed, so that's, yeah, I apologize for Lori, she mentioned, reminded me to mention that, that needs to be definitely a big part of the upgrades from my standpoint is enforcement action because with our serious code enforcement violations, we have no, we have no teeth. Sean can probably attest to that as he's reviewed the code. It's, it's constantly a problem. On the major code violations as they come, you know, as especially when it goes into receivership, obviously we want to do that and absolutely have to because of the cost, but there are a number of properties in Willow's that, you know, have gone into receivership before, but our enforcement action is severely lacking, if anything, a lot of different issues. And sure, on the bars, I think that's a, that's a business type issue because of the burglaries, the smash and grabs, especially with liquor stores like, well, that would be dispensaries, gun shop, the gun store, yeah, absolutely. So I think that's a, that's a business type issue. Like I said, you know, I mean, because, you know, for example, some of the liquor stores here and previously when we had two jewelry stores, same thing. There were, you know, the smash and grabs and it's just repeated and repeated and repeated. And so I, I understand where you're coming from with bars. I don't, on some businesses, bars would be appropriate if, if done right. I mean, you know, it needs to obviously look, look presentable, but right, right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, because bars can, you know, if done right, they can, you know, they can look pretty good. For example, Major Outdoors did a nice job in their bars, but it's secure. Been a number of burglaries to that store over the years, especially when John Hayes owned it. And, you know, and it's just, it's, I mean, it's the world we're living in and have been living in unfortunately. But no, I mean, all good points, I mean, we, it's got to be, we all have our own ideas, but I think, I think we all want the same thing for Willow's, you know? It needs to, you know, it's a, it's a great place and we need to make it greater, right? And I mean, and yeah, and one size doesn't fit all, you know, one size does not fit all. But in the general plan, just like, just like our Title 18, they're all living documents, they have to be updated on a regular basis. So if some things are missing in general plan, it's been three years, they need to be addressed. But yeah, a lot of, a lot of this is just common sense stuff. You need to follow the law and do the right thing, but, but boy, it just needs to be cleaned up and be made user friendly. I mean, it's just fraught with issues over the years. You know, you know, you know, so many, so many different projects have to be CUP just because of, because of our code. Anyway, I just wanted to mention enforcement action.
That's, it's one of the things I kind of want to ever the contrarian. So what I'd like to caution all of us on is being overly specific. So we have to be honest with ourselves with Willow's and what the future of Willow's is. We talk a lot about what we want, but I think the reality for what is going to happen for us in positive ways are going to be what could happen, right? We're not going to have, like, we can go out and say, hey, we want a minor league baseball team and we're going to write a whole bunch of stuff around, we really want this minor league baseball team, it's in the general plan, this is all going to happen. And then somebody calls and says, hey, we want to put up another cheese factory in, in city limits, right? We have to plan for, we have to realize that we're up against every municipality up and down the I-5 corridor and as we're trying to grow, we have to do things in a way that we are enabling, not thinking about how we prohibit things, how we enable things. And I think if we get too overly specific and if we get too far down the rabbit hole, it makes it really, really hard to say yes. And like, that's our job is to enable things and make it easy and not arbitrarily prohibitive for new businesses to come in and do their thing.
Well said.
That's the common sense side.
Right. And, and so just, just keeping with, hey, not what we want, but what could happen and how are we prepared for it? And then I do have a hyper-specific, super out of left field thing. New to town, all that fun stuff. What I have learned in my two and a half years of living, of, since living here, is there's a tremendous amount of history here. We celebrate it. If you walk down the hallway of City Hall, it's all celebrating history, going back to the mid 1800s, right? Do we have any kind of historic building designation, any kind of renovation guides? If we have these buildings that meet these criteria, me as a building owner or potentially thinking about buying property here in Willow's, right? I have different finance products, different insurance products. I have different things that make my life easier if I am getting into a historic property, which I think a lot of our, especially some of our residential and some of the commercial stuff down here does qualify for. Hey, is this part of this plan? Do we have a historic district? Do we have plans for that? Are we making it easy for people to preserve and celebrate the history of Willow's?
Don't we have a historic downtown Willow's or is that just in sign only?
Yeah, we've studied the historic downtown. We call it a historic downtown.
A bit of marketing as opposed to a bit of policy, yeah.
We have a lot of old buildings down there. The Reedy building that was built around 1900. And so we have those, but I don't think there, there's no zoning code over it that would allow us to afford the owner who wants to modify it.
Yeah, I don't know the rules of, so like, hey, there are different mortgage products that I can go out and get if it's a designated historical building, even at a local level. Hey, I've got nine different mortgage products that now I can go out and get that I couldn't get if it's just a house, you know, kind of thing. And hey, if we have these buildings that meet this, let's enable investment into that.
Yeah, a lot of buildings that are actually...
It's tough. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We are very, I'm sorry. We are very diverse in this city here. So we also got to take into consideration like us Hispanics culture. I understand the code of everything color, environmental, but if you really think about it, we see colors of life. So it's like everything's more bright and I know that a lot of it's not the vision for downtown or other areas. So I guess, are we also going to be more lenient based on the businesses that are going to be popping up? Because I know when I was looking into the codes, it said environmental colors. So that kind of throws you off is blue considered. Yeah, so it's, so I guess there's just a lot of different areas, especially when you're starting your business and when you don't really know that you should be looking at colored things or landscaping. I guess I just want to know, is there going to be, we're going to be like hitting hard, like, okay, sorry, this is not the color that we're looking at, but this business owner already spent all this money not knowing that the color is not appropriate? Or is it something that as long as the color looks good with the business and the surrounding areas, are we going to be lenient? I guess there's just a lot of questions that I'm, I mean, because we want to invite new businesses in and I mean, if you look around like Orlando, Chico, there's so many food trucks and there's color. The color is what causes your eye to pop and say, oh, let me, I haven't seen that place, let me try. So I guess that's also another thing. Are we going to be more of a conservative? Is that what we're looking at or are we going to be more of a diverse and try to branch out?
Yeah, just to address that, a couple of ways you can go about doing that is you could have sort of those objective design standards that we were talking about where there's maybe a range of a color palette. And what that would allow is if the operator or business owner wants to conform with that objective design standard, great, they have a path forward. Maybe it's an administrative level. However, if they want to do something creative, a little out of the box, an opportunity to do that would be take it to planning commission for input and public input. So what it would allow is if you can conform to, you know, standards that we have identified as cohesive, great, you can go the easy route. However, if you want to do something unique, we want to give you a path forward, it's just going to mean public input, a public hearing for us to review or approve something that's not within those objective design standards. So that's just one way to give folks the opportunity to be creative and unique in design, but also allow people who are wanting to just, you know, get something within the box done quickly, they have a route. So there's ways to address that, but I think different cities again might have a different taste. So we want to know from you, like, what is your desired color palettes or what, you know, what are the architectural styles that you're seeing and is it going to vary by geographic location? But there could be ways to design the code to allow flexibility, one being an easy path and one just being, we're going to take a little more time to review the brighter colors or the different schemes that we didn't, you know, plan for.
And just to add to that, as an example, a real life example, my house is in a historic district in Marysville. There was palettes that I could choose from, swatches. And if I chose one of those sets of swatches and there's like clusters of a half a dozen colors, but there was like 20 of these, if I chose those, I didn't have to go to planning commission and pay an extra fee. And there were a lot of great colors, so that's what I did and I didn't go to planning commission. But if I wanted to do a unique, my own thing, I had to go to the planning commission, pay a fee, make a presentation, probably hire a planner or project manager to do that. So there's, you know, that's a real life example of something. And I think that hybrid model frequently can work really well.
And I'm thinking those objective design standards are something that we're going to be developing, right? So that's where the input from the stakeholders, if the stakeholders are culturally diverse and have different opinions, if they come and participate in those, that's what's going to help shape what our objective design standards is.
Now, I have a question. When a new business comes in, like you're talking about, are they, is that explained to them? Do, are they given a packet? Do they understand when they're, you know, whether they're buying a building downtown or renting or whatever, what, what they're allowed to do, what colors, if they have logo colors? Because I know sometimes, you know, they've already established logo colors like you presented with the charging station. So, you know, sometimes, I mean, I think that should be okay, especially if they buy the building and they have their own colors. But how is that presented to someone coming in wanting to set up a new business?
So, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, oftentimes even from real estates, if someone just buys a building and they don't ever bother to even go contact the city to ask any questions, they might just find out that they have to do stuff they never thought of. But I think if they actually, I'm going to buy a building in Willow's, I'm going to go talk to Joe. And then what's Joe going to tell them? No, let you talk.
Yeah, yeah. So kind of just, I want to go back to the, so we do basically have a path forward for colors that we won't take to the planning commission and that would be the earth tone and wood tone range. If the applicant can demonstrate the other colors are appropriate with accent colors and harmonious and compatible with the site and character of the neighborhood, then we'd have them go to the planning commission to see if those are acceptable. As far as how is, how would somebody be notified of this? So unless they're, unless they're going through a new business license process, we would have no idea that somebody's occupying a building within the city of Willow's. So when they go through a business license process, we're notified and it goes through certain levels of approval, planning, building, sometimes fire, sometimes share. So what we'll do when we get this business license and it comes to me at the planning stage, we will ask, well, you know, number one, is it a permitted use? Do you need a conditional use permit? If it's a permitted use, we go to the next step. We send out an email to them saying, you know, will you be making any exterior improvements? Will you be putting up signs? And will you be making interior improvements? Things that would trigger building permits, things that would can trigger a conditional use permit for architectural design review and things that would trigger a conditional use permit for signs. So we get those answers to it and most of the time it's trivial. But if somebody buys a building and they're not operating, you know, if they're not operating a new business or they're not going to us for a business license, we would not be alerted to that. Or they're in an existing business and they go repaint it flamingo pink, you know, that would be, then we'd have to go to a conversation and we've done that, you know, we've had that happen before and brought them back to the planning commission. But really, if they don't come to us as a business license, it would be a complaint-driven process as a, similar to a code enforcement issue.
And really what I like about redoing this and the process is getting out and educating the community, you know? They don't know, they don't know. And that's kind of like, you can try as hard as you want, you still don't hit it all. But I think as we redo it and it's new and fresh and updated, to be able to go out and start doing that educational component about, here's our code, here's what we're enforcing, here's how you go and get your questions answered and it's not going to be perfect, but hopefully we can start doing that.
The other thing, I was just going to mention really quickly, the other thing is you'd be surprised at how many people who actually buy buildings and do real estate and all that kind of stuff are developers don't know to check on things. The house right next to me was just purchased by somebody who has multiple rental properties, does this all the time. And we're standing there talking and I said, you do know you're in a historic district, right? So you're going to have to have your colors approved. And he said, what, really? And I said, yeah. And he said, yeah, and I'm thinking about turning this into a commercial building. It's a two bedroom, one bath house on a corner. I said, you do realize that that's probably going to require a general plan amendment because that's not going to fit with the... Really? So, you know, people who are even, you know, flip properties, do it all the time, you'd be surprised how often you run into people who still don't even know some of the most basic things. They think they're going to buy it and they're just going to do whatever they want. So it isn't just the person who does it one time to start a business. It can also be people who actually you'd think would know those things to go ask questions at the counter. It's kind of surprising.
Yeah, so I'll just jump in. I was going to say, that's one of the asks we have. You guys live in the community. You, you guys need to decide, one, what do you want Willow's to look like? And then to Councilman Busby's point, you want to be specific with design standards if you choose to go that way, but not overly specific, right? You can't just say if it's blue. Because where I live, blue is, might be like neon blue, right? And the city may not want that. So you want to give a palette of colors, you know, ocean blue, but not like colored numbers, because the paint companies change their color numbers and then you'll never be able to paint anything.
Well, and I think another point when we talk about colors is making it clear, like the coverage, like, you know, the bulk of the building maybe isn't the brightest color and having some of that sort of changed up. So you can still have brighter colors, but it's not the whole building. So it tempers it a little bit. So I think, I can't remember the term for that, but percentages of coverage, that would be.
I wish we could have like a visual because like, for me, I, I want Willow's to grow, but when you just like, I like this, I don't like this, I want this, that kind of scares me because I don't want a hodgepodge. I'd like to... I'd like to, I'd like to know what we want our downtown to look like. Do we want more trees? Do we want more shade? Do we want, you know, what kind of businesses do we want downtown? I don't want to see Willows as a town that's so desperate for growth that we just stick anything anywhere. So for me, it's like, I kinda, I want a visual, is it possible or is there another town or small city that's going through the same thing we are that that we can kind of look at just to get ideas or? I just think sometimes when you piecemeal, then you don't like what you end up with, you know? And I'm off, I really do want growth. Some of you might not think I, might think I don't, but I do.
Yeah.
I just, um,
Doesn't need to be.
I want it to flow. Yeah, I want it to look nice and I want it to be where it's appropriate for it to be.
Yeah, I do.
When, when I mentioned, you know, the, you know, the there's some hang up on the colors, right? Christina mentioned flexibility, we, we need flexibility. Like the neon blue, yeah, a couple of them. But, you know, flexibility, I mean, we're, we're way too restricted in our, our current color schemes. So this, you know, anyway, I don't know the answer, that's why we have professional planners. But there, there needs to be a way to, there need, there needs to be a better way to do business. More welcoming, inviting way, user friendly for everyone. Anyway, thank you.
I feel like we keep killing the onion and going down those rabbit holes. But for the most part, we just need to generalize, make it inviting and be, be flexible in decisions when it comes to us. Because it's not in what we opt, for instance, the color palettes. I think if we spend too much time trying to add the perfect, you know, we have color palette, but if somebody wants to paint their building blue, they can bring it in. I think that's when we become flexible and understanding and more of a relationship with the community.
So it's, it sounds like that you're all in favor of the sort of the hybrid approach then maybe of like, here's some set palettes, but if you want to do something different, you need to go to the planning commission? And maybe that would be two different color palettes. I don't know, you guys tell me if this is right, commercial versus residential or is there just like a one set thing? You do two, right? Cause those are very different experiences, right?
Different, yeah.
Residential stuff, just thinking.
Couple of different ways you can slice it for sure. Um, it can be based on, like you're saying, Busby, the historic nature of certain areas, maybe we do have an overlay for an area and that overlay has a palette or it's commercial versus residential or, you know, there's a couple of different ways you can approach how you want the design. And we're really talking design of building, but we can also talk about design of other site improvements. Are we wanting to see detached sidewalks on main thoroughfares or like what other, what other design elements beyond color? Facade treatments, modulation, um, percentage of windows to walls on your commercial buildings that are maybe in this entryway district. So the design component, I, uh, color is really important, but there's also other components that we can consider to help make something more inviting. Are we serving a pedestrian? Are we serving the vehicle? Like what is, you know, what is, and that's what we're trying to understand too, what are the different characters of the neighborhoods, um, of the different zone districts? And how do we, you know, get the vision to come to fruition with the right zone zoning standards and design standards? Yeah.
Okay, you're not gonna have a document that, that answers every and all questions, right? It's gonna be documented, right? And it needs to be flexibility, user friendly. And, and, you know, just well done, you're right, with flexibility. So, giving an example, a few years ago, Walmart, when I mentioned corporate, this is silly, absolutely. This hang up on colors is silly. Walmart, corporate colors, right? You know where Walmart is, out here along the freeway, right? Walmart had, had to change their, their, uh, the city of Willows, through the planning commission, had Walmart change their color designs, their corporate nationwide color designs for the new, for the expansion on the, uh, on the customer pickup area. So Walmart doesn't need Willows, right? Walmart did it, but I'll tell you what. I'm not this, I'm, I'm not a Walton, right? Don't own Walmart, but if I was, I'd be thinking about, see a Willows. They did, they did, but they, they changed their color scheme, their corporate nationwide color scheme. That's silly. That's silly. That's why I say that this hang up on colors, we need flexibility, common sense. So, just, just one real life example that happened here a few years ago.
Hampton Inn.
I'm sorry?
Hampton Inn.
Yeah, exactly. So a Chevron, we have two Chevrons here. Chevron, blue, primarily blue, blue and white. Come to Willows, luckily this hasn't happened, would the Chevron have to change their color scheme to earth tones or yellow? To be in Willows? I mean, Chevron would say, see a Willows. So, but you know, that hasn't happened, but you know, I'm just illustrating the absurd here. But this, this Walmart issue was, was troubling, was really troubling. Uh, but anyway, this is all.
So on another topic, one of the things I like in our current code is where we have established neighborhoods and maybe there's a vacant lot in that neighborhood that we have some of the ability to change up the front yard setbacks based on what the predominance is of the existing homes, because older homes wouldn't have had a 20 foot front yard setback. So I like the ability within our code as we look at geographical areas, if we're adding an infill or we're doing something that the code has enough exception in it that we don't have to stick with just, it has to be 20 feet or this is for this. So I like that currently in our code. The other thing that comes to mind when we look at our code is some of the Facebook posts we saw after some of our code enforcement on cars. And, you know, people are saying, well, it's my yard and it's my property and if I want to have five cars in my front yard, you know, I should be able to. So, well, so, so I think, so I think as we do the code across the board that we, that we're mindful of private property rights and so that whatever those code exceptions are, um, and I like that no yard may be used or allowed to be used for storage accumulation or placement of junk for automobiles or other motor vehicles machinery for building, you know? I like that. So I think, you know, making sure it's quantified, that it's a health and safety issue or, you know, if you're the neighbor, do you want to be living next door to the junkyard? So I like the exceptions, but I also like to make sure we're filtering it through, you know, people spend a lot of money for their property and for the city to tell them it has to be a certain color and you have to, you can only park like this and you have to plant this kind of tree, finding a balance. And then.
Yeah. I think the hard part about this is, um, like, uh, getting into like super fine detail of sidewalks and all that, like, it's definitely one of those things, like, I know it when I see it, but I don't know it well enough to articulate it, right? Like what, what's there? So it's really hard to like then point down into things. But I think that we do bring up something, um, it, uh, is there a, uh, an optional or a some sort of best practices similar to like, um, you know, Detroit went through a lot of like light enforcement and everything like that? Is there a bolt on to, um, or do we want to entertain some sort of like uh, blight guideline to after, after it gets to a certain point, hey, we have recourse to go out and do this kind of thing? I think that's another part about these communities that are in generational flux is we're gonna see a lot of houses that people, you know, either, um, you know, go to a facility or, or pass or something and then they just sit because the kids aren't gonna take them over and everything. We're seeing that out in county a lot with the farms and everything. Um, you know, how, how do we, how do we tackle, how do we tackle, uh, code enforcement when there's no owner, you know?
Um, if I could just ask, I meant really quickly, um, Councilmember Busby. Um, I think a lot of that is in the code enforcement section of the, of, of our municipal code and so um, we were, since we're updating the entire code, but Harris is not working on that. We can, we can revisit whether or not we've done enough to do, to meet, you know, the goals and objectives you just cited. But I was also gonna ask the council and the planning commission, you know, Delaney mentioned a lot of different things that you can do with windows and sidewalks and all those kinds of things and I don't expect, you know, the council or the planning to, commission to be experts on all of those things, but I think that if generally, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like you would all be in agreement that you would like to keep your residential neighborhoods and your downtown walkable with a focus more on pedestrians than being, you know, a focus on, I can speed through downtown as quickly as possible to get to my next destination. Cause I think if you, if, if it's couched in those kind of ways and if you agree that that's something that's of value you have, then Delaney and Harris can, you know, can all take that back and go, oh, well, if that's the priority, then this is what that looks like. These are the kinds of windows, the other treatments that we would do if the value is around a pedestrian friendly neighborhoods and downtowns and let 162 and Wood Street be the throughway and that's not what we're trying to do up there. Um, and I think it seems like you're all in agreement on that, but I just want to confirm that because I know that Harrison Associates knows how to take that information and go, oh, okay, well, these are the treatments that we would do if that's one of your values.
So that would be applied to say, because I kind of like that, for instance, we all talk about downtown, so Sycamore, maybe there's spec- specifications for how those buildings should look and if anybody brought in a new business. And then what you're saying, the Wood Street 162. And it's also for neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, I'm saying that if, if you say that these are our values and I'm not trying to make a city that's all about just cars, that it's about people getting out and meeting each other, excuse me, and creating community, then, you know, the planner mindset for those of us who are planners, we have a sense of like, oh, well then these are the treatments that you do to encourage that kind of ma- atmosphere versus a thoroughfare for cars, that's encouraging a whole bunch of different kinds of treatments. And they'll know that just by knowing what your, what your goal is for your community. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I think if you're all in agreement that your downtown and your residential neighborhood should continue to be walking friendly, pedestrian friendly and made for the residents and not made for cars going 50 miles an hour, I think Delaney will be like, okay, I know what to do with that.
And I just want to add one other thing to that too, as far as building design goes and not necessarily the the route part of it, but we do have the historic downtown and, and Wood Street design guidelines. Um, so we can get that sent to you guys and it's an, it's an older document, but if you can, you go through it, may give some good insight into um, what the, what the thoughts were. Um, I'm kind of creating what Marty said on the building design aspect of it, not necessarily the foot traffic versus traffic side of it. So we can get to um, get to that and might be something to glean out of those building design guidelines as well.
And then if I can jump in, I just want to remind everybody, you're, as I think Councilman Busby said, you're planning for the future. What do you want it to look like? Not, not next month, but in like four years, 10 years, 15 years? Because these changes won't be implemented overnight. So if you change the sign ordinance, the existing permitted signs can stay until the business changes or they want to change their signs. But I guess what I would ask is, because we could debate everything all night.
Yeah.
Um, because I, I believe you guys are gonna fill out some comments. I would say try to narrow down four to five of the top priorities you guys have. Because you may all have different priorities and then we'll have to kind of digest that. Um, because I know you guys are on a limited budget, right? We could, we could easily turn this into X amount into amending the general plan, which is a whole different issue, whole different cost. Um, but what do you guys need to make it where, and I know you're gonna rely on us. What do you guys want to see that you know is not working, that you would like to see changed? And then what would you say is kind of working that you might want to see and then prioritize this?
And we put the global recommendations back up on there, on the screen, just as a reminder of what was brought forward earlier. So, so a thought I have as we look at our specific zoning districts, the entryway, which I know went away in the general plan. I was on the city council 25 years ago when we implemented that entryway. And so the vision at that time was that we wanted, that's a major thoroughfare through town, but we, the, the council at the time did not want that to become neon lights, fast food drive-throughs, we have beautiful Victorian homes along there. We didn't want it to be residential either because it's a busy highway. But we wanted to retain the character and the charm and what that looked like. So I think we need to, in my opinion, we need to do something along that border from a design perspective or something to kind of manage that. And then as I look through each of the zoning, um, the actual zoning districts, I think if we're gonna look at being more business friendly, in my mind, it's looking at better defining things like dance and dance studios are allowed, but tattoo parlors and, and aerobic exercise places aren't. I mean, looking at making more things permitted, less things a conditional use permit, that's gonna make it less costly, uh, more timely for a business. So I think that's what I'm gonna do is actually go through these. I think you guys are probably from a planning perspective, looking at terminology and just archaic businesses and cleaning up those sort of things. But is that kind of spot on? If we can move things out of conditional use or make things more administrative? Home occupation permits right now have to go to the planning commission. In my mind, I made a note, that should be an administrative, for the most part, just an administrative deal. So if, if someone went through these, if we gave you some thoughts on the types of uses in the district they're in.
Who else has anything else to say?
I just wanted to ask a follow up question. So in another jurisdiction I've worked, they had a sentence that said, and other uses of similar nature and character, because they weren't gonna capture everything for the next 20 years. That's kind of an easy fix. So it could be like gas stations, electric charging stations and uses of a similar character. And that allows staff to then make that interpretation. If they interpret that that proposed use is not within that, then they would go to a higher level of review.
And I think we have that language in the CUP piece of it for the planning commission to determine that, but we don't have it on the permitted use side of, for the administrative piece, yeah.
And it might depend, I mean, we might all have a different opinion about where we want staff to have an opinion.
But absolutely.
Else too, so it, well.
I was gonna mention too, that the, um, 162, Councilmember Pride, what you were saying about in Wood Street is, you know, increasing, it's a challenge because it's Caltrans jurisdiction as we all know. But, um, increasingly Caltrans, at least unless they've changed their minds, for a while, they have been wanting to turn over streets and are into complete streets on streets they were never into that before, which means a potential landscape median in the middle and some traffic calming and, you know, that it's still kind of a boulevard, but it, it's aesthetically more attractive and, you know, they have been over the years, and I don't know, you know, David, maybe you can answer this. Over the years, Caltrans made this big shift to like, let me hand over your highway that goes through your town. And here, why don't you, you want to, here, you want to apply for an ATP grant and go after some complete streets? Now, I don't know if they're still leaning that way, you know, because every time leadership changes, like things go in another direction, but if they're still advocating and supporting that or if they, you know, I don't know if you know, if they've gone and, and done a 180 on that.
I don't know if they've changed that. I think they're still leaning that way. Um, but when you use an, well, maybe not an ATP grant. Sometimes when you use Caltrans funded money, there are very strict regulations on what you cannot do in the future. For example, where I live, they used Caltrans money to build a parking lot for a future train station. The train is no longer coming. Now they want to build housing, they have to give Caltrans all that money back. That is still a parking lot 10 years later. So I think they're, they're still doing that, but it's, um, yeah, it changes with uh, the administration and in they're gonna laugh, in 543 days, it may change again.
Right, no, exactly. Yeah, I was down in the city of Arvin and they were advocating because the state highway goes through Arvin near Bakersfield and Caltrans came in and said, why don't you make this a complete street and you could get a grant? And I just looked at them like, are you, are you from Caltrans? Cause that sounds completely the antithesis of how they normally were with state highways before. And so we went, started going down that path and then I left, but we were looking at a median and looking at things to still be a thoroughfare, like a boulevard, but also more aesthetically appealing and, you know, calming traffic a little bit. That's where we were headed. Um, so I mean, that could be another way to address some of what you're saying.
And to go off of what David said too, it's you're a little safer with the street versus a parking lot that has an expe- an expected development to it. Just the street is the street is the street. We're never gonna be able to expand it because it is Caltrans. So if you can add those bulving traffic calmers and, and church it up a bit, for lack of a better phrase.
I, I'll tell you the story sometime about the proposed median down Wood Street when I was on the city council.
I think I maybe had heard about that actually, it didn't go well.
Oh, yeah.
But when it's a, when it's a two, two vote and you're the mayor and you have to make the deciding decision with, they have a median down Wood Street and the only people showing up were opposed to a median because you can no longer drive your tractors and harvesters down there.
Right. Um, I just joined the Zoom meeting. I wanted to just to share an illustration if possible. I don't know if I'm able to share screen, Carleen, if I can, if I can, okay. Just to help with some of that. Perfect. Okay. Is there a way to share screen on this as a panelist or no?
I think you have to promote to presenter maybe.
Share. No, it's bright green. I just didn't. We'll see if this works.
Try it again, Delaney.
Okay.
There we go.
Yep. Okay. I just thought this was a good example and I wanted to kind of give for that, you know, those of you are like, how would a zoning development standard or design standard change? Um, this is a good example. This is kind of a small town USA, first street, main street type of, um, kind of what the, what they exist and have is four lanes. Um, they have their kind of main street and businesses on either side. And with the change to their zoning code, this is the change. They reduced the number of lanes. We got more sidewalk area, more pedestrian friendly. Um, it's a more inviting place, um, somewhere you actually want to go walk down and shop and see what's down there. So this is sort of how you would implement the streetscape standards or the commercial corridor to, you know, invite folks to want to spend time, not just drive right past. Um, so I just thought this was a great visual to see like what, what could change when you go from a vehicle oriented design standard to more pedestrian oriented. You get that more inviting feel, um, kind of geared towards that. So keep that in mind as you're thinking of these neighborhoods or specific areas. Um, do you envision something more along this line? Or do we want these corridors and thoroughfares to allow vehicles to get from A to B quickly? Um, you know, it'll change what we want to put in the code or that zone district, um, to help implement. So just thought that was a good visual.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you. I think you shared something like that, yeah, before, and I really appreciated that. I just want to say that I, I heard what you said about, but I really do believe that we should believe that willows can be more and that that's what we should be striving for. We can make willows a really pretty town. And I think we should want that and that's what our goal should be, not this is willows, this is what we can do. I think we should always be looking ahead of this is what we want and that should be our, our main focus.
If there's nothing else.
Um, I just would ask Harris, do you guys?
Closing comments?
Do you guys feel like you have enough information to go forth and conquer, so to speak? Um, or do you, are you, were you looking for something a little more specific from anybody in particular from the council, the planning commission?
I mean, I feel like what we got here was, um, very helpful as far as direction. I think what we can do is kind of put our heads together, consolidate this information, maybe regurgitate it back and kind of get some input from there. And I, I am curious to see what we get on some of these comment forums a little more detailed or specific. Um, and then from there, I think maybe the game plan is, is to put something more cohesive together. And then that town hall again, would be a really important piece, um, that we want to present to more of the public, but getting your input first to help guide that conversation. And then hearing from your, you know, constituents of like, is this, are we getting a little bit closer? We want to massage this a little bit before we take it to a town hall. So I think the input we're getting today is great. I'd love to read your comment cards, again, regurgitate it back and, and make sure we're, we're all aligned. Um, but I don't know, David, if you have anything else to add.
Well, I think your picture that what you showed as far as streetscape versus walking.
Yeah.
If you had some images that you could bring to the town hall, it said, this is what we're talking about.
For the town.
Trying to create. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but the long-term vision would be something along this line by going away from vehicle driven to more pedestrian nature of the downtown. And having some visuals would go a long way in, in assisting most of us to understand what you're actually talking about.
Yeah, I love that idea. And also maybe having something set up like a survey of folks with, with some, you know, boards or illustrations. Do you like what you see here? What would you recommend? And getting people to kind of write down their ideas as well would be great.
Because a picture is worth a thousand words.
Absolutely, yeah.
And based on what, uh, Matt said, growth will come to us and, uh, not us to growth.
Right.
So we need to be prepared to receive what comes to us and be able to address that within the nature of what we prepare today. And still stay within our, our primary goal and vision. So I don't envy your job.
Oh, this is a challenge we're looking forward to.
I'm, I'm envisioning at a town hall meeting and the way I would look at things is if we could do the images, which I think is a fabulous idea. But if we had our central commercial zoning district, however our zoning districts line out, if we could put a map of the zoning district, a visual of what we're sort of, because of the designs, we're looking at what it would look like. And then put a list of the types of businesses that we're thinking would be there by right and which would be under a use permit. So people could look at this and go, oh, here's our downtown. Here's the vision of what it's going to look like. Here's the kind of uses that we're saying, you know, that's just, you can do that. Here's the ones that we're saying we want to look at a little more closely and had those around the room. I think that would, people that don't deal with this all the time, it would make more sense.
Absolutely, yeah, kind of.
It sounds like you guys signed yourself up for a charrette.
I love a design charrette.
Keep thinking too, on the residential, because you know, what you, the residential zoning code just says, you know, yard setbacks and maximum lot coverage. But then we have all these other places in the code that it says, you can't park all this stuff in your front yard and you can't do this. So for the general homeowner who would go to this town hall meeting, it's like, okay, what's my neighborhood going to look like? Or what are my constraints potentially going to be? Trying to find those real things that, you know, people, everyday people are going to be able to understand how it affects them and hopefully give us some actual feedback.
And by showing them where different businesses can go, you're also showing them that you're not excluding the business, you know?
Right.
We're not saying we don't want this.
No, these are the million, that's a huge law.
I think, yeah, I think so, because I, are they being transparent about the reason for this? That the current code's a little archaic. It's not to go out and hunt down people that are out of code, but it's just because it's, it's needed. It needs to flow with the general plan. I think they need to hear that so they're, you know, the community doesn't think that it's a witch hunt.
Sure.
For code violators.
Right.
Well, we're in a different century from when this was originally written.
Yes, exactly.
And they just need to understand that.
Yeah, essentially what would happen, you know, once, once you do have a code, you know, adopted and poised for implementation, you sort of have this date so that from this date moving forward, anything submitted is under the new code. Everything existing is sort of this grandfathered use. Now, when they come to change the use, we want to bring them in under the new code.
I think that's real key.
Yeah.
This has been there for 50 years.
Yeah.
Somebody else buys it, it changes. So then they have to follow the new code.
Exactly.
It's very simple.
I do think that there is going to be a little bit of a differentiation or some, um, uh, ways to communicate it in that, um, there, because we have been devoid of proper code enforcement for so long. There's a whole lot of things that are in violation of current code, but like, man, it's been like that for 10 years. Y'all never said anything. Like there's a different, that, that is a different person than, hey, you're grandfathered in. And that is a hill we are going to have to climb together.
Funny though, the people that come in here to the front counter, if, they'll zero in on, oh, you're going to clean that up. Thank goodness, because I run into that every time I come in to get a permit for so and so. So there will be other, another set of clientele will be super happy to see things cleaned up.
And I think letting them know that you're streamlining the process for a lot of things, I think they would really appreciate.
But yes, you, you will hear from the people very quickly.
What do you mean this isn't cool anymore?
They are not in favor of the changes you're making.
Yes.
Like generally at a public hearing, you don't hear from the people in support of the project.
Right.
True. And then I just think our whole cargo container section is another one. I know when the planning commission did the study session on that, there's a lot of, you know, new uses for cargo containers. People are always amazed that we actually have code section on cargo containers. And just another, and I was talking to our fire chief, because I want to put in a fire pit in my house and I couldn't find any code. Well, fire stuff's in the building code and we don't allow any open fires. So I, you know, so to me, it's like, okay, are we get, mhm.
Oh, whoops.
Well, some people are doing it and, and living right across the street from city hall, I have to be mindful that I'm doing it correctly. But things like that, I mean, can someone put in a fire pit in their yard and they have a warming fire and they have a cooking fire other than a barbecue? Those are some of the new things that people want to do for social and for other things. And, and we're silent on that. We don't, we don't talk about that at all. So I made a note, some of the fire code, I couldn't find it. I didn't realize it was in the building code. I didn't even look in the building code. So I think some of the fire stuff that's very pertinent to people, you know, maybe there's an action that people can go, oh, fires.
You need code as far as fire in building to follow state law, period. Yeah, I'm not sure, pretty much Marty, right, Joe?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing now. We just, we had a lot of our own silly code and we just following state law.
Well, and I get, you know, and post state law, so I could go to the state fire marshals and see if there's any kind of a code and just follow it. But I think a Q and A or, I mean, just some ways to be able to, people can go online and go, oh, you know, I want to, I want to do a warming fire, can I?
Well, it's.
And they can pull up something.
It, it's posted on, on website. Is.
About a fire?
Is the fire in building code posted on the website, the state code or not?
No, I think.
I think ours is, right?
I think.
There's no reference, there's no link.
I, I think for the fire code, I think it, um, we do have some things that are in addition to the fire code themselves.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Sprinklers.
Yeah, sprinklers in commercial buildings, some things of that nature. Yeah. Yeah. But I don't know fire that well, so I, I can't attest to much. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I, yeah, well, can say that too, that you can't have an open flame fire, right? And in the city.
Copy that.
Okay, well, I thank you for coming. And I think, um, if you have any comments, please write them down. If you're listening in the audience, uh, please stop in and pick up a comment card and complete your comment cards and we'll get them to these fine folks at Harrison Associates. And we'll look forward to your return.
Thank you guys.
And 14, I'll adjourn the meeting.